I mean, it would have been bad.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody. We're going to start with the prayer from Pastor Steve Ayers and then follow it up with the pledge of allegiance.
That's great. Lord, we just thank you for today. We thank you for the men and women that serve our community. We thank you for the citizens of our village that you continue to bless them. Lord, I pray that our hearts are constantly seeking after you. Lord, we just pray this in your name. We pray this in the loving name of Jesus. We thank you for your grace, your forgiveness, and your love. In Jesus' name.
Amen, amen.
Just do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with roll call.
Bassett?
Here.
Barth?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
Klepper?
Here.
First thing on the agenda is approval of the January 16th regural council meeting minutes. Everyone's got copies of those. Does anyone have any corrections or additions?
Making a motion to approve as written.
Second. Roll call.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Abstain.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Abstain. Do we have a form of notice? Mike and I abstaining.
Yeah.
There's no boards or commission meetings planned. Next thing up would be the finance committee met on February 13th. Men's, Mr. Packets. You guys want to make any comments on that or have any questions about it?
I'll make a couple of comments. We discussed the EMS and fire budget. We've already had to transfer some money over this year until March when our next payment comes in. And we get paid twice a year, March and September. And we're looking at the cost of operating the fire and EMS and those services and looking to see whether or not we discuss possibly adding an additional levy on the ballot in November. And if so, Cheryl and Scott, we're going to work on numbers to see how much we'd have to put on there if the community would still like to keep our full EMS and fire department up to staff. So something that we discussed our last meeting and Cheryl and Scott were going to get back to us on numbers to see how we'd like to proceed. That's it.
Okay, and next up was the personnel committee met on February 16th. You guys have the minutes on your packet tonight. Eric, I know you were in attendance. Did you have any comments you wanted to make on our meeting?
Personnel committee met, was called by a couple of different individuals from the village. One was Bub Schooly. He was asking about maybe having pay increases for village employees that hold mandatory licenses. Some other communities and townships or towns, I guess, they pay some of their employees 50 cents an hour to a dollar an hour if they hold certain state licenses, mandatory licenses. So we're going to look into that. It doesn't really affect a lot of our employees, but Cheryl's going to give us a list of all the employees and how much more that would cost us per year, how many hours they worked per year. Another one was brought up about employees receiving overtime. We currently have two individual employees that work full-time but are also helping out in other departments. And so since they are working over 40 hours, even though it's not all in the same department, they're currently getting paid overtime for that. Ideally, we try to not pay overtime as much as possible. I know when it comes to removing snow and things like that and water main breaks, we got to pay overtime. But if we can avoid that by getting part-time employees, we would. I know Charlie was going to check with our solicitor and find out.
He did. We talked about it. Well, by email yesterday.
Okay, so we're going to bring that back up in our next meeting and talk about. And another one, the third one that got brought up was cell phone stipend. Some of our individual employees here in town use their own personal cell phones and the discussion was whether or not we should offer a stipend for those individuals instead of supplying them with a second phone. A lot of people don't want to carry two phones around with them, but maybe the village could if they budgeted maybe for next year, since our budgetary said this year, if the full council or majority council members were in favor of offering a stipend to certain individuals that mainly they do a lot of phone calls, like Mr. Juan or, you know, the mayor or somebody like that. Some of the street department guys that use their phones a lot, the police chief taking pictures and stuff. I know you guys have phones for all your officers, but some of the village workers. So that was brought up to see if maybe entertain that. Wouldn't be a lot of money, maybe $10, $20 a month was one suggestion. But we're going to look into that, get a list of all the employees and figure out how we'd like to proceed with that in 2024. So that was the last item we talked about.
Any other questions? Thanks for that, guys. Administrator's report.
Just a couple of things. Good news, Energy Optimizers has officially completed all the deficiencies as of today. So their check will be sent out to them. They did leave us quite a bit of inventory, a bit of stock as well. Had a meeting prior to the council meeting with Eric, Charlie, and an individual from the foundation and went ahead and chose an engineer. So we're going to go ahead and proceed. I'll proceed with contacting the engineering company, Sixmo, tomorrow. They're based out of Cleveland and they'll be working on the pool and the splash pad for us. The SMTA phone switch over this Friday. My building down the street and the fire department will be this Friday. March 1st, City Hall will get switched over. Couple of months ago, I had mentioned a snow blower that we were ordering. I went ahead and canceled that order. We got an update that our new delivery date was 8/10/2024. So went ahead and canceled that one. Got with Redline Equipment there in Sherwood and they can get pretty much the exact same thing, just a different manufacturer. Instead of $19,400, it's $13,200. So we put that one on order and that one is eight to 10 weeks out. That's all I got.
You have progress updates on the well field?
Yes, Oortman is done. All they need to do yet is put the pitless adapters on the wells and then Brian Excavating can get rolling on getting rest of that pipe out there. Other than that, it's the only update I got for well field.
Are they able to put a schedule together or is it all just contingent at this point?
All contingent. I'm assuming Brian Excavating will be putting in a extension to get their stuff done.
What is that deadline currently? Do you know off the top of your head?
I want to say it was March of this year, beginning of March. Mommy Valley is aware of it. He's already, our representative for Mommy Valley's already sent the request in for an extension to the state for part of the grant funds. Which most of those are used up. Now, the million-dollar grant, that doesn't, the deadline for that one isn't until March of '24. So we're good there in our PTI. Well, I guess our PTI then for the water tower doesn't expire until '25.
Do we have any updated or schedules at all on the water tower?
Other than what I had put in a packet a couple of meetings ago, no, that's it. We still need to figure out what we want to do for a design in color for the new tower.
Any other questions for administrator? All right, solicitor's report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2023-01, a third reading, final reading by caption only, and ordinance amending chapter 905 Trees, Weeds, and Grass of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, providing regulations regarding trees, weeds, and grass in the village.
Making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2023-02, a third reading, final reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 911.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to revise the rules governing notices to be given to remove litter.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-03, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance adopting section 521.13 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to regulate outdoor furniture.
Making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Pass.
Next is ordinance 2023-02, a third reading, final reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 911.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to revise the rules regarding disabled vehicles and motor vehicle junk in the Village of Hicksville.
No move.
Second. Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Let's pass.
Ordinance 2023-07, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance adopting section 1165.092 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to regulate outdoor furniture.
Making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-03, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance adopting section 521.13 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to regulate outdoor furniture.
Making a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2023-04, first or third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 1165.09 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, revising the rules for parking and storage of passenger motor vehicles on residential property.
I want to table that if I can. Motion to table it. Can you just make a motion to table it? I make a motion to table it.
I will say what he's saying about tabling is we're all, I think, all in agreeance with you guys.
The general public.
Yeah, that some of the changes that were thought of were not 100% thought of for everyone.
Okay, so what about the warnings that some of us have gotten?
I can't, those are by a public, that's somebody personal.
Those aren't reelected.
That's not from us.
There's nothing village issued.
That is somebody else that printed those off and stuck them on mailboxes and stuck them on top of cars. That was not, nobody from the village.
So what are we supposed to do with these?
You can throw them away. They're no good.
They're just going to come back.
Yeah, they're not, they're not work, violations. I don't, we don't even know who put them out. I don't even know who put those out. They weren't by anyone from the village.
They're only a violation. If anybody received one in a mailbox, that is a violation of the law.
That one you have there, ma'am. We have all the individuals.
Okay, so this is tabled, so what happens the next month if you guys choose to bring it back up? Do you have to go through three more readings? That way the public has enough time to respond? Or is it just next month it'll be brought back up and you guys pass it?
It could be brought, but somebody could make a motion to bring it back off the table and then it would immediately be up for a vote at that time.
So we're going to have to come back month after month after month to show you guys that we don't approve of this?
We are tabling this because we want to do a lot of changing.
Yes.
Maybe that's not quite what's needed. Maybe that's not quite what's needed.
So my guess, is there some way to like make some kind of announcement before you guys want to bring this up in a meeting again? So that way us as residents can voice our opinions?
Are you on hyper reach?
I don't have any idea what that is.
There's a notification process where the village can send a notification out to any resident in Hicksville. It's free to be on. They send you a text alert and I don't see if there'd be a problem putting something on there that's going to be brought up.
On the website. We've tabled it primarily because there are 10 individuals that are on the docket to speak tonight. So we were not going to make any decision without allowing the public to speak first.
Thank you.
So we've got the 10 people on as soon as we get done reading the rest of the ordinances. Okay?
I need a second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call to table.
This is roll call to table.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Okay.
Next is ordinance 2023-05, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance adopting section 1165.091 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to regulate the parking and storage of commercial motor vehicles and trailers in the village.
I'm going to table that.
I second that.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call to table. Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Oh, shoot. Did it too hard. Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
It's tabled.
Ordinance 2023-06, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance amending section 1169.10 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to revise the rules regarding disabled vehicles and motor vehicle junk in the Village of Hicksville.
No move.
Second. Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Let's pass.
Ordinance 2023-07, a third and final reading by caption only, and ordinance adopting section 1165.092 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, to regulate storage of recreational vehicles in the village.
I'm going to move to table that.
Second that.
I vote, oh.
Roll call.
Vote to table. Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-09, a first reading by caption only, and ordinance authorizing the village fiscal officer to transfer funds and declaring an emergency.
Right, you need that as an emergency or no?
No.
No, okay, not.
And then resolution 2023-02, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with the Rooted Shop LLC and Davis Legacy Real Estate LLC and declaring an emergency of which is they've been waiting around for a long time and they got projects that need to be done per contracts.
Motion to suspend.
I'll second that.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Abstain.
Second and third readings, a resolution 2023-02, by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with the Rooted Shop LLC and Davis Legacy Real Estate LLC and declaring an emergency.
No move.
Second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Abstain.
Charlie, would you be able to take this time to educate the public about how ordinances are brought about and what's the process so they understand moving forward?
In general, there's a couple of different ways, but generally with this body, the way they come about is usually from depending on what area they need to be done in. So if it's something like these involving the ordinance committee or if it's a specialized topic involving like water and sewer or something, then usually the committee meets, they have their ideas about what needs to be addressed, things that need to be done. They put their heads together. I can't speak for them because I'm not part of that process, but it seems maybe they do a little research on their own, go out and look at the way maybe things are done in other communities, things of that nature. And then when they have an idea of what they would like the ordinance to say, then they pass that along to me and say, you know, here's what we'd like to be in there. Will you draft this ordinance? And so my role in it, I guess, is not only to draft it in a way that's consistent with what they want, but if they do ask for something that, not that they would intentionally, but something that I think may run afoul with the law or something to that effect, then that's my obligation to say, hey, I don't think we can do it that way because that's unconstitutional or violates some current state law. And then I prepare them based, assuming there's not one of those problems, I prepare them based upon whatever their requests are. And then when they get brought back for the readings, that's done at the committee's request. Basically, they're signaled to the council that, at least as a committee, all of which have three members on, so I assume are either unanimous or at least two to one in favor of bringing the ordinance, then they will bring it back. I'll prepare it. And then once they've okayed the draft of it, then that's when it gets brought back for the first reading, then the second reading, and then the third reading, obviously. And at any point during that time, people can come, like you guys have come here today, make comments, ask questions, do everything to that nature. And then it, obviously after the third reading, unless like tonight, and I will say, I can't speak for everybody, the couple of people I've talked to, I guess the tabling of those three ordinances tonight is in direct response to the outcry from people in the public and obviously there's a need to reexamine what's in there. And so that's the process to do it. I mean, that basically puts it on the back burner and yeah, a meeting from now, it could be brought back, but I suspect based upon everything I'm hearing that that's not what's going to happen. They're going to dive into them, see what they, if there's stuff they want to keep, if there's stuff they want to change or do whatever. And at some point, we'll be back with a, maybe, maybe not, I guess, newer, different ordinances that then in that case would have three readings and then would be voted on after the third reading. And so that's kind of generally how the process goes, at least for ordinances like this. That's separate than say, for instance, if Corey needs legislation so he can enter a contract with somebody on a deal that we're doing or whatever. But as far as establishing new laws and statutes in the village, that's generally how that's accomplished. Now, it could come about that the mayor, whatever, goes to some conference, is at the mayor's meeting or whatever and they're talking and he hears something that he thinks is a good idea and he says, oh, I'm going to go to the ordinance committee and say, hey, here's a good idea that the mayor of wherever, Brian or wherever, said to me and I think that this is, would be good for us because we've had this issue in the village. And then turns it over to the committee. And so it's not like all the ideas have to be generated out of the committee. Sometimes they, or even Corey might go to him and say, hey, I'm noticing we got a problem with this. And then they start looking into it themselves and then that's what generates their discussions, which leads to them sometimes asking me to draft an ordinance like this.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Essick?
Sure.
Legality wise, can you actually tell me whether or not I can have a vehicle parked on my own property that is legally licensed and in good operation?
Currently?
Yes.
I would say, without the passing of that ordinance, I would say in the village, yeah, the Ohio Revised Code specifically grants municipalities the right to regulate parking within their areas. There's a couple of different sections that authorize that. It doesn't tell you how to do it. It doesn't say you can do this, but you can't do that or whatever. It literally is real broad and it says that's one of the powers that's reserved. Something called home rule where a municipality or even a township or county has the right to establish their own rules on certain things.
I have no problem whatsoever with junk vehicles. I mean, obviously that is a problem.
For sure.
You know, I'm more concerned about my kids coming over and not being able to park in my yard.
All right, so I just want to address the public and establish the ground rules for the 10 people we have in the docket. This is per Mayor Jones. These are civil conversations, no swearing, no arguing. You know, we want to keep everyone feeling like this is a safe spot, that they can speak their mind, but be courteous, be respectful. The first person we have, I'd like to welcome to the stand is Kristen. Just when you get to the podium, state your name for the record, please. And you've got five minutes.
Good, that's exactly what I need. My name is Tristan Scranton. I'm going to use this platform today to address a few issues that I see that are ongoing and tying together. The first one is this proposed parking ordinance. There's small driveways all throughout Hicksville. I park my vehicle on my lawn due to a lot, the poor lot layout from the 1900s. This is the case for a lot of properties here in this town. This fact, the fact that this is being talked about is silly. Whether or not this ordinance passes, I still plan on parking on my lawn. I understand that you have a concern with a couple of citizens and you're reformulating all these ordinances to handle these issues. We dealt with coal in the junk business for 20-plus years in downtown Hicksville. Why do we all of a sudden care about appearances? Has anyone tried reasoning with any of these property owners?
You're saying that there's no options to deal with this diplomatically. I wouldn't be cooperative or reasonable if I felt like everyone was attacking me. Exhaust all options. Blanket ordinances only invite trouble. I am all for rules and regulations, but the problem is they need to be equally enforced. A good example is our sidewalk ordinance. The past three years, I've received three violations, two involved unedged sidewalks and one for a cracked sidewalk, legitimately. I fix these issues per your ordinance. There's a property across the street from me that is owned by someone on this council. For three years, it has had an unedged sidewalk and some nice cracks. Why? Do ordinances not apply to any of you? No one in this room is above the law, yet we keep inviting subjectivity to the table. I have also heard a councilman publicly say that we need to clean up Hicksville and home values are too low. In three years, my property value has doubled. Property values in Hicksville are high compared to communities in the area. Hicksville is a very clean town. I say venture out of town and give others a hard look. I fear this councilman may only have their own self-interest in mind. And a pretty straightforward question here, guys. Do you guys want to target rentals or not? As a landlord myself, I try to take pride in my properties and my tenants. I know that there's at least two other landlords here in this room right now. They might want to think about their own properties before making rash decisions. Now, I do agree with you that there are a few properties out here that do have issues. Rentals or not, I say enforce the current rules on the books without subjectivity. There has been talk about ways to increase the taxable base or raising the income tax. Here's the hard truth. Hicksville is not an attractive community. It is not because we lack amenities or because of the way the town looks. It is because of high property values, high taxes, and high utility costs. This town is taxing its citizens to death through all taxable options. This town has tried to rule itself to the point that it's chasing citizens away. Why would anyone want to move here? Why would anyone want to move here? We live in a time where land availability is scarce, labor and building material costs are an all time high, and supply chain issues are making things difficult to get. All this just to get controlled by an out of control administration. I understand why no one would want to build a house here. Another big reason people aren't interested in Hicksville is the lack of industry. This has been mentioned numerous times. Reach out and appeal to industries to build here. Offer tax breaks and incentives to bring industry here and to build your tax base. No jobs equal no people. 2018 to 2022, industry boomed and buildings were built all around us. And here we are arguing about parking spots. Why would people invest in this town if the leaders can't? You can only blame yourselves. Stop pandering to petty issues and focus on what matters. And as far as the income tax, you can choose the easy way and tax us more, or you can choose the hard decisions and stop spending money. Stop looking for reasons to spend. Stop caring about what other towns are doing and hold accountability for unneeded spending. Unpopular opinion here, but I'd rather see our town with a balanced budget and good infrastructure before I care about a splash pad or a pool. All I see are future tax burdens. And lastly, the biggest one, stop trying to anger everybody. Just relax. We all want to be friends. Understand that most people want to be left alone. You are giving people a reason to complain and causing infighting within our community. You stir up issues that aren't a big deal, and the issues that are a problem, you handle poorly. You are not helping this town. I implore you to do what is right and vote down these ordinances. Rethink what you were trying to do and adjust accordingly. You are elected to lead this community, not control it. Thank you.
Next, we have Kay Laney to address council.
Hi, my name's Kay Laney. There are some of you I don't know, some of them I do. This thing with this parking in my in my yard. If you want to buy my house, you want to pay my taxes, then you can tell me what to do with my property. I I understand, you know, we don't want the junk vehicles, but that's a totally different ordinance. And people I think are kind of confusing that. We want this town to look nice and you need to drive down Bunnell Street, drive down Perry Street with all these houses. It's dilapidated, nobody living there, and they're just falling apart.
Drive down Edgerton Street.
And drive down Edgerton Street that, you know, we've got some down there. There's people, a couple of houses down in my area that they don't have a driveway. The only way they can park is out between the street and the sidewalk. There's no room to put a driveway in. And you're just going to, the cost is just outrageous. I know, I just put a new driveway in. It's not cheap and you're just going to burden these people with having to put a driveway in or put one someplace that they don't have one. And the people across the street from me, that was Mrs. Don Stott's house, she, you know, they've always parked out front. There's no driveway. This town is old in some parts, older than than a lot of the other areas. And you got to stop burdening people with all this stuff that you want to have done. Some people can't afford it. That's all I have. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is Jason Wentz to address council. Jason here?
Jason.
Jason.
Jason Wentz. Good evening. I wish to start by saying that I should not have to be here. None of us should have to be here. However, the actions of this council have compelled us to be present, to speak and to show solidarity as a community against this ordinance revising the parking and storage of passenger motor vehicles on residential part property. To clarify, this proposed ordinance would prevent property tax paying residents and renters from parking anything for any amount of time that has wheels and an engine anywhere but in a driveway. This would mean no parking in your backyard either. It is quite literal when it says nowhere but in a driveway. The ramifications for this overreaching ordinance would be vast. I will list some of them. This would affect family gatherings such as birthdays, holidays, the fast approaching graduation season, wedding receptions, my wife and I originally considered having ours at home, and wakes. Yard sales, garage sales, those are coming up too. Displaying a vehicle for sale on your own property. Moving vans, trucks, trying to get as close as possible to residences to use a ramp to unload or load. Contractors and construction equipment working on a residence. To expand upon this, anything that has or once has had wheels and a motor parked on grass for any amount of time would be fair game for a ticket. This includes golf carts, RVs, vehicles that are not currently in working order. There are certain circumstances we must also take into account, such as first responders parking their vehicles at their residence in their grass to be able to rapidly respond to calls without the need to have other people living in the home move their vehicles out of the driveway. Renters who do not have a driveway, does that mean landlords are responsible for putting in a driveway? Or are the tenants just out of luck? Owners that do not have a driveway and will have to build one. Is the village of Hicksville going to pay for or subsidize the construction of these driveways? Will first responders be made exempt from this ordinance? Even their personal vehicle? Will they need special tags to hang in their vehicles? Before I bring up the next point, I want to make something clear. When drafting any law for any community to abide by, it must always be considered how the proposed rule could be misused intentionally or unintentionally. That should be lawmaking 101. Think what is the worst way this proposed law could be applied and work your way back from that. If you cannot keep the proposed law from being easily misused or misapplied, then you should not pass said law. That is your job as council members. Our role as constituents is to hold you to it. With that in mind, the next point, village council members had said that enforcing this ordinance would be left to police officer discretion as to who to find and who is okay to park in their grass for whatever reason that officer finds acceptable. There inherently lies complications with that. Favoritisms for friends and family of the officer or for local leaders such as those who sit on this council and their friends and family. Singling out members of the community considered a quote troublemaker by either law enforcement or by local government. Singling out those with a history of running with the local law. Finally, I find it curious that the main proponent and council member pushing this ordinance would benefit directly from this ordinance passing, as many residents would be forced to have their family functions at a hall of sorts. I also find it curious that another council member did not cover this divisive topic with the detail deserved in said council member's local newspaper. My message to the paper also went unanswered regarding this issue. In conclusion, this ordinance only serves those who are worried about their property values, those with businesses that would have something to gain from residents not being able to use their property for family functions, and the village of Hicksville government by funding it with frivolous fines. If the goal is turning Hicksville into a place where younger generations want to return and raise a family, do not make it possible for family gathering anywhere but a place they would have to rent. It does not serve the will of the townspeople. And if it passes, I expect many of these seats to have different butts in them come 2024. Thank you for your time.
I'm Diana Egley and I've lived here all my life. I grew up in this town. And the change where I can park is a bowl. I have a golf cart that's going to come out this summer. It's licensed. I have a trailer. I pull my junk into the dump when we can. It's plated and we can't park it. If you want to, I'll put cement in my front yard. I park my cars. But when I have holidays, I have about 16 cars in between my driveway and my front yard to come because I'm old. They don't want to come when I'm dead. They're coming now, and that's the only place I can park, just like having a camper. You have a camper so your kids can have activities and stuff. Where are they supposed to park them? I don't have a fenced in backyard. Pull it back there and then you got roots you got to fit. Then you got water problems. I said, you guys shouldn't be telling us where we can park as long as it's in a driveway and there's no crud, you shouldn't be able to tell us where we're parking. I got three different places by my house that's lowering the value of your property. One's on rock, one's on canyia, and one's on bundle. They got trash in all of them. And nobody wants to do nothing about it, but my yard's clean. I pay to have the trees cut off my railroad in behind me because I don't want all the brush and all the scrap in my yard. And it costs me about $400 about every five years, but I do it. It's not my place, but I don't want all that. But we shouldn't be able to, you shouldn't be able to tell us where we can park and where we can't. We're not tearing up our yard. If we tear up a yard, we fix it. I keep my yards clean. I had two places, both of them were clean. I got, I didn't get violations. I fixed my sidewalk. It cost me $900. You put these new ones out here and you don't charge them to put it in. But us old farts have to fix our own. It's not fair. That's all I got to say.
Wells.
Tim Wells.
There is a Tim Wells, but you're second to last. Tim Ward's the next. Is Tim Ward here?
Tim Ward.
Tim Ward.
Okay. Dawn Ish.
Hey, guys. So my name is Dawn Ish. I've lived in this town my entire life also. We use my front yard from the sidewalk to my house for parking throughout the year. We park trailers out there to haul brush. We park family vehicles up there for birthday parties. I got two kids. My second one's getting ready to turn 16. We do have a good driveway. We had to cut out half of our yard to widen it, but that's what we were, we were able to do that. There's a lot of houses in this town that can't. Okay? I understand that you guys don't want to see all the ruts and whatever, but instead of fining everybody, why don't you guys do like a spring cleanup, say, hey, we got extra dirt from a project that we had in the winter time. Can we come and fill in your ruts for you? Be hopeful instead of being hurtful to everybody. There is a ton of upset people out there right now, and they have good reasons to be. So before you guys go and sneakily pass something, think about the people who's voting for you guys. Think about the people who's paying all of our, the taxes that's going back into this village. I know if I could afford to move out of town, I probably would because number one, I can't afford the water bill. And number two, all these stupid ordinances, it just keeps getting more and more and more. So if I'm going to park in my yard and have a garage sale, that's what I'm going to do. And if I get fined, I guess I'll fight it in court. So that's kind of all I got to say. Don't, don't do this to us, please. Thanks.
Next is Tina Walters. Is Tina here?
Tina, that's me.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Tana.
Tana, sorry.
Just like Montana.
Montana.
Yep. I have lived here all my life. I did move away for a couple of years. I ended up coming back because I love this little town. But all these ordinances and telling me where I can park on a property that I bought and am paying for myself, I have no other income in my house. It's me. I'm the one paying my house payment, my property taxes, my insurance. The vehicle that was tagged with that warning is not a junk vehicle. It runs, it moves. I've used it myself. It's my son's car, truck. I don't think what you guys are doing is right. There's a lot of people that can't afford to put stone to cover more yard so that they can have a larger driveway. I can't, and I don't have the room to do that. I have a very small property in front of my house, and to go into my backyard, I would have to go into my neighbor's yard on both sides. They ain't going to allow that. I can't do it. And there's a lot of people here that can't do it. That's all I got.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Did you say somebody put that on your car?
They put that in, my son, my oldest son was at my house. They brought it up and told, give that to him, told me I had to move my junk vehicle, and I could protest it if I paid property taxes.
So I'll just address this. This has nothing to do with the village right here. This is prepared by somebody, maybe even somebody out here in the crowd today. It circulated trying to get people gathered like you guys are today to get, get you to come to the meeting to discuss this, but nobody from the village of the ordinance wasn't even passed, so nobody from the village, at least to the best of my knowledge.
See, that's the reason why I'm here. Normally, I'm at home getting ready to go to bed because I'm at work at 5 o'clock in the morning.
I just want that to be clear. I mean, this was circulated by somebody in the community.
I apologize, but we did not put that out, so.
There's a lot of people that's gotten those.
And the information they put on there was even, but that was done by somebody else.
We need to find out who's doing it and take them, take care of it.
Thank you, Tana.
Yeah, no kidding.
Next, we have Jennifer Redden.
I just recently moved into town. I previously lived in the country for many years. I moved to Hicksville when I was in the sixth grade, so I've lived here most of my life. I guess my main thing is, is I want you guys to think about the families that have children that still live with them that drive. Because currently in Hicksville, there is nowhere to rent. It does not matter how hard you look, how many applications you put in, you are not going to get a house to rent in this, in this town. It's just not happening. I have six people that live in my home. Five of us are drivers. So there's me and my husband, and then we have three adult children who drive. They have tried to rent homes in this community, and they cannot find one available. They work in Hicksville, so they don't want to move out of town. So they have chose to live with us to help save money so that way they can buy a house one day to make it easier for them. So that means I have five vehicles on my tiny property, my tiny drive. Our only option is to park in our, in our yard. I guess I want you guys to think about those scenarios because I know personally from reading on several comments on Facebook that there's a lot of families like mine that cannot afford to put in a bigger driveway because you do not have the space. Or it's the cost of adding the gravel to the front of the property. And if you guys are worried about home values, what's a complete front yard that's nothing but gravel going to do to those home values? Not only the person that has to do it, but the neighbors. It's not going to increase the value because it's going to be gravel. It's not going to be a landscaped lawn that is going to look nice. You guys need to consider these things, not just people leaving junk vehicles, but if you have something that is registered, that is moved every day, and you want to find that person, that's a huge issue because some of us don't have any other option. And you guys need to consider those scenarios because there's a lot of people like that in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Wells. Hi, I'm Tim Wells. I live at 300 South Main Street. I do have a two car driveway along with another section that's out by the road that is gravel. I do have a lot of gatherings often, birthday parties, family gatherings and other events. I could find it, I find it an issue if I could potentially be cited for a family member coming over to any of those things. So before I keep going here, I do want to thank Mr. Beverly and Mr. Bassett. I did watch the second reading of this, and you guys were the only two that actually stepped up, so thank you. And so I do work as a law enforcement officer at a different agency, not here in town. I do want to give my opinion from that aspect here. I would absolutely hate going around and issuing citations to people who are parking in their own yard that they own. Lost my spot, sorry. This would stop me from being able, in that position, this would stop me from being able to focus on enforcing real laws and catching real criminals. So Vanworth, Ohio recently passed, skip that. I'd like to say a thank you to the chief and the officers here in Hicksville. They do a great job. You guys do a great job. They are also short-staffed, and if I do believe correctly, they do need at least one position they're currently hiring for. This ordinance is going to make that hard for them and even harder. The applicant pools are very small now for officers. The ordinance may cause good officers to look elsewhere. It doesn't matter how good the boss or the community is, they have to do this stuff, they're going to look elsewhere. So Vanworth, Ohio recently passed something very similar to this, almost exactly, to where people cannot park in their yards. Vanworth, Ohio has been having a backlash because Vanworth County Sheriff's Office has to come into the city to handle their calls because they're facing all the backlash and handling all these citations. Is that what you guys want here? I don't pay thousands of dollars per year in taxes for someone elected to represent me to decide if I can or can't have a vehicle parked in my yard. You are elected to do positive things to keep our town growing and moving forward. This isn't one of them. At the conclusion of this, I hope it is made known to, made known to the public and to the voters who intended to put this order in place and who voted for this. And I will do all the work I can to make sure each person that voted yes will not be elected and sitting in those seats at the next election. All in all, if this passes, I will be one of the first people to list my home for sale and move to the community that I work for. We stay in this community because we have a great school and we do have a great community here. But if someone's going to tell me that I can't park my car in my yard, see you later. I can go pay less taxes somewhere else. Question here, what can I currently park in my driveway at this point?
Anything.
In your driveway? Yeah, what, what can I park currently in my driveway? Vehicle, why, anything.
Park anything as long as it's licensed.
So an RV, I can park in my driveway? A camper, a trailer?
According to the existing ordinance, which I was trying to compare to the old ones because I wasn't a fan of all these either, automotive vehicles, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles and trailers of any kind or type without current license plates shall not be parked or stored on any residentially used zone property other than in completely enclosed buildings. However, one boat and one recreational vehicle may be stored in the rear yard if they have current licenses. current licenses. That's what the current ordinance, I think this one needs some adjusting, but not to the extent of what they had been.
Can be parked in the driveway?
In the rear yard.
In the rear yard. As long as, as long, that's what the current one shows.
What about the mayor's that's sitting in his driveway? Because I got, uh, letters saying that I had 15 days to move my camper out of my driveway, that it needed to be in my yard at regular $500 fine.
Doesn't make any sense.
And I don't know about that, 'cause. No, neither from $500 fine either.
I have the letter at home, I can grab it, I didn't bring it, but this has been going on, and I moved it.
Somebody told you you were gonna pay $500?
Yes.
Who did it come from?
It came from whoever signs.
Mike Bailey?
Yes, Mike Bailey.
There is, there is no letter that goes to residents that says it's a $500 fine.
Go get it. Go get it. It doesn't, I don't know if it says the fine, but.
Then why do you say it's $500 fine if it doesn't say that?
Because judges aren't always up to where I want it. Yeah, it's funny.
Nowhere on this ordinance does it even have a, a fine listed.
Most, most of our ordinances don't have fines listed, you have.
Why does she, you can get a letter that says she's gonna get a fine when it's sitting in her driveway? Why?
I'd have to see the letter. I mean, personally, I don't know what it says. I get the letters in the mail too, 'cause I gotta, I'm, I'm against the violations of the village too, 'cause my sidewalks are cracked, and I gotta get them fixed before this, this fall, so. I'm not, I'm not above anyone else either, so I got those, I got them for, for edge of my sidewalks, and I got them for weed eating my back alley, so I, I get them too.
No, the camper can be parked, it has to be parked in the backyard.
You're okay, you're gonna get, you have more to say.
This is why we are trying to retweak some of these ordinances, okay?
Hey, let's be fair and let this gentleman finish speaking.
He's gonna get a little bonus time here.
I don't need too much time.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, to continue on, I'm gonna move in a slightly different direction. Um, so in conclusion here, I do wanna throw out that, uh, our village administrator has told people that I am always delinquent in my water bill. As well as mentioning other names to residents, I'm not gonna deny that I'm always on time. Quite frequently, I do miss that bill. I do pay that $50 ticket every time I get something hanging on my door too, that's crazy. Um, so what is that anybody else's business, what I miss? Is that somebody else's business to go out there and tell someone, hey, Tim's never paying his water payment? I don't think it is, and I think that issue needs to be addressed today.
Yeah, I do too. I like to, I like to know who I told. That's what I like to know.
Oh?
That's, I mean, bring them in, bring them all in.
I could definitely talk to you in private, but.
We can do it right here.
Let that person know that.
I, I don't, I don't see them.
Normally, something like that would get brought up to person.
Let's do that in private.
Keep this civil.
So, um, I do want the rest of the community to be aware of these actions, as their names may have been, been mentioned as well. Uh, with that, I do want to go to closing. Um, and I'm, I'm welcome to come up and have a conversation with anybody at any time. I do work third shift, so if you guys wanna have a talk about that, we can absolutely do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Will you use your other backyard?
Mm-hmm.
My camper's parked in our side, in our side yard. Double lot in the side yard, only so many months of the year we put it in storage in the winter.
One of the ordinances that we were looking at is possibly changing the way it's parked and how, because we know there are several people that's got big RVs, and they're parked in their driveway, so we're trying to tweak those ordinances that will allow that to continue. All right?
We have it in the side yard, we have a double.
That's, that's why we wanted to go over these old ordinances, because of many of the big RVs that are sitting in town, there's no way you can put it in the backyard. So that's why we went through some of those, and we have retweaked some of those and where you can actually park them. Okay? So, but that's just how that old ordinance reads, and.
And I don't know about her letter, what it says or anything, but I do know I have some points from Mike Bailey about a neighbor of ours who has, um, he's got a couch that's been sitting out there for years, he's got mattresses in his backyard, beer cans for the last couple of years, and I was told that if there's nothing they can do, if somebody wants to leave, they'll go.
So, but that's an ordinance that they got brought up that, that we approved, outdoor furniture.
Is that what that is?
Yes. To eliminate that kinda stuff.
Oh, okay.
That was never in place before.
Absolutely, great, that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
And also to, to speak, to speak to your concern, to speak to.
Just let's do one at a time so everybody can hear everybody, I'm sorry.
So, to, to speak to the chief and that, that comment, that one of the ordinances we tabled this evening on parking and storage of commercial vehicles and tra, or recreational vehicles, storage of recreational vehicles, did address that.
Okay.
But we made the decision tonight to table all parking revisions. But yes, the intent of that ordinance was to allow, to not require RVs and campers to be parked in the rear yard. So, we made the decision tonight, though, to table that, of on, you know, to take it down further.
When it's not being used, it's in the summertime when it is being used, you don't wanna keep it in another location.
Absolutely, and we.
I think that was addressed in the ordinance as well, wasn't it about?
That's the one that we.
Like April to October or something, it could be in a certain spot.
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Yes. So, the intent, the intent is there to accommodate those things.
Wasn't?
We had, we had discussed putting that there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But we decided, yeah, the time, the timeframe didn't make sense, so.
So we've got one more on the docket, Joanne Gardner.
No dirty talk.
Okay. I'm Joanne Gardner. I've lived in Hicksville all my life. Most of what I was gonna say has already been said. I respected this town, I always have, and the last few years, it just seems like there's a lot of little nitpicking going on. It doesn't run smooth, and I'd like to see respect returned to Hicksville. This is still America. Now, as, as I hear people talk, there are a lot of people in this town struggling to make ends meet, and I think council should realize that. Lot of people don't have the money to go out and blow, so. I also wanna say, as I read the ordinance in the defiance paper, it said a vehicle must be parked on paved surfaces. If you look vehicle up in the dictionary and paved, paved says solid surface, mostly cement. Okay, I'm lucky enough to have a cement drive. What can I park in my driveway? It doesn't say, it says vehicle. Can I park a camper in my driveway? Because according to the ordinance, I can park a boat, golf cart, trailer, camper, whatever I want in my ordinance, four or five cars. So I think you should revise the ordinance to be more specific if you're gonna be nitpicky. So it needs to be defined much better than it is. Thank you.
So we don't have anybody else on the docket, but we do welcome anybody that wants to speak for up to three minutes if you come up to the podium.
I just wanna know if we're still gonna have citywide yard sales? Because it says on this yellow paper, no yard sales.
Take that yellow paper and throw it away.
Yeah.
No, but that's my favorite point, during grass sales, you park in side yards all the time at people's houses.
Just throw those yellow papers away, your life will be better.
I'm talking about the ordinance, how you have to be on paved or gravel.
The ordinance didn't pass, the ordinance is tabled.
But if it does, that takes away town-wide grass sales.
That won't happen.
Everybody just parks in their road anyway.
Melody.
If you'd like to come up to the podium and speak.
Why can't you seek am sure anyways if I see you?
Please state, state your name.
My name is Melody Moomy. I am a lifetime resident, born and raised here. I just want some clarifications. Where can I get a copy of these ordinances? Is there a book at the library, or I have, where are you?
She's here every day.
Every day, okay.
Talk to them online.
The current ordinances are, if that's what I'm talking about.
So the town website is not working. If you want to read them, I checked the link just this past week. If you want to actually look at them, you gotta go to AM Legal.
American Legal?
Well, it's AMLegal.com, it'd be American Legal, but the actual web address is AM Legal.
Are you asking for ordinances on the book, or the ones that were proposed or turned?
Well, if I'm gonna be accused of breaking the law, I wanna know which one it is and what I can do to not break it. Thank you. In your last meeting, you were talking about the rule of the area between the sidewalk and the road. Is that a tree line? And there is not supposed to be any gravel there to park on?
That's, I guess to clarify one thing, there's a bunch of names across the country that that's known for. I think the two most common are tree, I think Ron mentioned devil strip is another name. That all is designed to be the same area. The area between where the paved portion of the roadway ends and where the sidewalk is, or where it would be if there was a sidewalk there and there isn't one.
Art was put in in the 60s, what does that mean?
Well, I got a question.
That's old.
If that, if it's a rule, and it's not, if I understood the last meeting, that's a state rule.
I think there was some discussion of that, but I don't think it was ever clarified.
And I know.
I think we were on the fly trying to.
I live on Columbia.
Yeah, it's really not clear. It's not clear.
Okay, I live on Columbia, and we have officers, thank you very much for coming down and keeping us safe, and thanks for the streetlight, whoever put it in, or made it work, it was great. But the neighbor across the street just put in, had it put in professionally, gravel last summer.
Last summer? Or this fall?
This fall. This fall. So if it's against the law, why did, were they allowed to put it in? Just a question. And if you're worried about my car being parked there, what about big rigs? You can't see around them puppies on a two-lane road. You go down Hattery, you go down Columbia Street, they're parked on the edge of the road, and I don't have a problem with anybody making illegal tender. But I got two of them, one right across from me and one right beside me. You can't see around them suckers trying to back out of your driveway. And I do know what it's like to move nine ton of rock by hand, 'cause I did it. And I don't wanna do it again.
I will say one of the changes on the ordinance for that, there was a, a part in there for commercial vehicles like that not being able to park like that. But that's tabled, so that's not, that's just.
Okay, that's another thing. And my brother recently died within the last two years. He passed in his home. I was there. So there was his vehicle, my vehicle, my husband parked in the backyard, I had two sisters come in from out of town. They parked where they could. When the hearse pulled up, he parked in the, whatever, the tree zone, or whatever the heck, that devil's zone, whatever. So I'm gonna get fined for that?
No, it's over with.
It's the table.
Right, for now.
And it's tabled, it's.
But for now, but you see what this stirs?
We can't answer that question because we have to go back into committee and figure out what we're gonna do.
Well, committee members, do you see what this stirs?
Well, I'll guarantee you that if, if any of our officers stopped and give that hearse a ticket, we're gonna have a chat with them.
We probably have a chat with me too.
For us citizens, that's gonna potentially get that fine. That's just, it's our concern. It's not saying like, oh my gosh, like this.
This is why we stopped everything, dear. We're, we're gonna make sure that, that that's not happening.
We want you guys to be aware of these are our concerns, and we want you guys to take into consideration all those concerns. If you decide to bring this ordinance back up, you have to just think about all these different scenarios and things that could happen.
Trust is at an all-time high here, folks. I mean, that's what I'd be picking up from all of this.
What's that?
Because the trust is at an all-time high.
Ron?
One of the people that drive a semi for a living, and they park in the front of their house. I understand it, it's hard to see around. But if it's on a back road, shouldn't they be taking into consideration the sight distance? Instead of making it a law that you can't park your commercial vehicle on a side road?
Now, now you're, now you're selective. So, so you're saying, okay, well, mine's okay if it parks here, but Joe Blow parks, he's a mile over, but he doesn't have that same sight line of sight. You've gotta have a set thing with no gray areas that covers everybody.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't hand select them.
If there is a way they can see around it, shouldn't the driver of the passenger car be able to look around that semi if they have room to see around it? Yes or no? Just like driving down the highway. They should be able to see around that semi, yes or no?
Whether they should be able to see around it and whether it's a good idea for it to be parked there are two different things.
Well, no, that just comes down to common sense.
There's a cur.
Use your sight of view to see around it.
Who wants a semi sitting in, in the residential section of, of their area? I mean, you get up in the morning, go out and, and, uh, start your car, get in your car to go to work, and, and there's such a truck that got started in the cold and used rolling smoke and, and.
Now we're getting it.
Say, say that's a, roll smoke, and that semi.
You want, you want trucks down here now?
I mean, do we just wanna control everybody to a point where heavy breathing is illegal? Because that's where we're going. That's the route we're going.
Why don't you run for council?
You know what? I, I mean, I've had a lot of people talk about that, maybe I should.
You've got a great, Jen, that was a great.
Let, let her finish.
Like I said, I don't have a problem with anybody making illegal tender. I don't. But I also know how people drive on this particular road that I live on, and they come around that curve at Hattery, and jam it coming down that road, and I don't have time to see past that big rig. You can see before it, but there's a certain point, you can't see past it. I'm sorry.
No, I understand, I understand.
And I don't like them turning around in my yard either.
Does anybody else want to address council?
I do wanna say I appreciate you listening to all us and tabling the ordinances for now and looking into it again, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Carol.
Yeah, I'm right along those lines. I wanna thank council, I've, I've been here many times here at the council, I've seen lots of.
For the record, I'm sorry, everyone.
I'm sorry. Yeah, my name's Pastor Steve Irs. I pastor Lifeline Connect here in town, there's my advertisement. Well, I wanted to thank council, 'cause I've come here many times, watched the ordinances pass, and watched the process go. And to me, it's obvious that the process works. You guys have seen something that's not gonna work, took it to the council, these guys have tabled it, they're gonna reconsider it. To me, the process works. That's why they read them three different times, so the community can come and voice their opinion. So to me, praise the Lord, the, the process works. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
All right, there's no one else, we'll move on to department heads. Chief?
Really, the only thing I have is they started the flooring project today for the office. I'm not sure how long it'll be, take to get completed, I'm expecting at least a week. So, um, that's really all I've got, I believe. So unless anybody's got questions?
Thanks, chief.
All right, just thanks everybody for coming, voicing your concern, so.
Other question in the back?
Can I, I don't know, can you approach this as a general question? I need your counsel.
Yeah, you can come in. I know there's not that much room, but.
Do I need to go in, or can I just ask?
You can just ask for it, that's fine.
So, when an ordinance is introduced, it's typically introduced by title only, to save time for the council members of the committee of the committee? At any time is it, at any time is it? At any time is it done audibly or presented for the community to read it before it goes?
That's why it's published. That's why it's published. That's the point of the publishing it, and I... Do you also post this?
Well, let me help with that, because I have the newspaper in town. I own the news Tribune, okay?
I know.
It's not in existence anymore. And we would run the ordinances after they were passed. And I know with these kind of ordinances, and I agree with a lot of people, maybe any ordinance that is maybe published in the Crescent or put online prior to us, you know, bringing it to the table gives people a chance to read the ordinances, look at them, understand them. And then I encourage people to call us. You know, I've gotten four phone calls. I've talked to a couple of people out here.
And that's my question. Is it available to the general public?
It is.
Or it's made into official... Where? Where is it? Because I actually, I did reach out to the council member on the ordinance committee, and I did get a response.
The agenda is on the board where you walk in the front door. It's also on the website. And the, everything is done... This is my packet I make up for everybody. It has everything in it, so they have it on the Friday before Monday. And so anything that's listed on here, we don't deviate from this. We don't try not to. But they're all listed here by title, which is what he reads.
Right.
And they're all available from my office. Just call me. I'll email it. You can come and pick it up, however you wanna do it, before it comes to council.
So that's the agenda. But again, you read it by title, so...
Which is what the law, that's what the law requires, is if you read by title.
And if anyone wants the agenda, they can have that also.
So is the whole, or it's in the agenda? Is that what I'd like to see?
No, yeah, you, it has, you can come up and look at it if you want to. It has the title and what it is.
It only goes in the, it only gets in the paper after it passes usually.
Yeah, but I have it before it passes.
Right.
Is there any opportunity for the general public to read it before it becomes...
Yes.
If we have concerns?
Yes.
So if I would contact the office, I'd like, I'd like to see the agenda, the whole proposal.
Right.
Yes.
But I have to know which one you want and what's your mail.
Now I get what you're saying.
You have to seek it out, basically. You can get the agenda, and then if you see something on there you're interested in, you would have to, as opposed to just flipping through the paper every week and going, oh, I'll read this.
The agenda posted on the website only goes through December 2021. So are, were there no ordinances passed in 22, or is there a lag?
American Legal is typically a lag.
Yeah, they only do it at the end of the year.
Once a year.
Once a year in like November. And so then they'll show up after that.
That's when they're codified.
Yeah.
So if I were to call or email, and I can get a copy of all of the proposed ordinances?
Yes.
Speaking of that, Cheryl, have you looked into the link on our website being broken?
The link isn't broken. It's just that there are a few more steps because they sold the company to another company, and we're waiting for the link.
The link totally works, but like, it takes you to everything that's been passed.
Right.
Yeah.
2021, I think, was the last step, basically.
Yeah, so I would think pretty soon that they should show the 2022 ordinance.
Yeah, in February.
In February, so...
I will also note that on the front, there's a calendar in there. And anytime there's a committee meeting, whether it's ordinance, water, sewer, any of those, those are open to the public. And those are, when an ordinance meeting is scheduled, it's written down there. We have to give 24 hours notice. Usually it's just fitting in between somebody's schedule, but those are also open to the public.
All right. Thanks, guys.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you go and watch these council meetings, when you go to these, you know what I'm saying, like everything's being said, we have a lot of Spanish people coming to this community, and they work hard. Is it translated for them? Because when I watched, we watched the council meeting, it was strictly in English. How are they gonna hear about it?
Yeah, it's something we can look into.
Yeah.
I can translate it written.
And it's not gonna go bad.
But not verbally. I can do it written.
We could provide a written transcript in Spanish. Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
So that'd be, that sounds like that would be helpful.
I think it's time to look into it.
Okay. Okay. That's a good note.
And just another reminder to folks that anybody who received those warnings, those are not legit, okay? We receive complaints. The actual, I think the village hall actually received complaints. It came into the village hall, not the police department, but people were supporting getting them in the mailboxes. You cannot place material in mailboxes, okay? Only the postal service has that right to do, okay? So, you know, if you're out passing these flyers out, you know, just make sure, be cautious even going on private properties, right, and placing them in mailboxes, okay? So, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Can I speak before I just got here?
Yes.
Kayla even got me actually, because she said she spoke and she was being told that she the liar. And so that's why I'm here. She said that she was told that the $500 fine for her camper was called.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Jasmine Hart.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't wanna come up here. That's why I didn't come up until now, because this is a bunch of drama that I'm really just over. But the stuff that Kayla said is true.
So the statement that she made, that she got a letter and said it was $500 fine in the letter, right?
I don't know about the letter. I never saw the letter.
Exactly. That's why I said, because there's no, when the letters that go out, that she would have received, right, because I believe it's the same standard letter that we send out for the village. Am I correct, Corey? It's the same one that, that we have that you send out, right, if it comes from Mike?
That would be a...
It's different.
It's different, okay.
Coming from zoning office.
I really did. I wanna come up here because...
Because we don't put the fines. They're all...
With his family, with my family. But Corey did tell us that he was, that she would get fined $500 for her camper. That's not lies. And I hadn't even got a letter, of course.
But she said there was $500 in a letter. We're not gonna compare apples to oranges here, okay? Because none of the letters say what the fines are. These are all minor misdemeanor offenses when you're served a, served these. And you've got 14 days from the day of receiving the letter to make the correction. And then if you make that correction, you're not cited. The purpose of that letter, it's 14 days.
Okay, so is that really like a law or regulation? You can't have a camper in your driveway?
Yes.
So now you're gonna be telling them they can't have a camper in their backyard after telling them they had to? I wish I would've came up here.
They tabled the ordinance. They're gonna redo the whole thing, so there's nothing...
But I still was informed that I had my camper from my driveway to my yard, and I would be fined. And...
Yes, there is an ordinance that says that. You cannot, at the time...
So I went to the mayor, and I asked the mayor if he got a letter. He did not. So I'm just confused. How people allow this on a driveway and I'm not?
So what is the fine? What is the fine? If she didn't cooperate at all?
The minor misdemeanors can't be more than $100, right?
Well, unless it's...
$150.
$150 is what a minor misdemeanor is. Unless the statute clarifies something less than that. Sometimes it'll say it's a minor misdemeanor, but there's a maximum fine.
So like regardless if it was $100, $500, or $1,000, it was spoke about outside of the situation, of the point. None of people's business.
I guess, what do you mean it was spoke about outside the situation?
Well, Corey came to me and was telling me about her business, which isn't any of my business. And like, this is just a bunch of drama that...
The senior personnel committee. We're way off topic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we bring it?
Yeah.
In regards to the parking, those are all being, parking anything anywhere on the lots, those have all been tabled with the current ordinances that, or the previous ordinances that are on the books are still on the books. None of these new ordinances have been passed in regards to parking plated and registered vehicles. So those will be revisited by the ordinance committee and then discussed. And if we decide to move forward, then they'll be brought to council. And I can assure you, we're not gonna try and sneak anything in and just vote on council. Anything that we do reintroduce, we'll do three readings on.
There are a lot of excellent points brought up today, and I'm so glad everybody came, because there were things that people probably didn't think about when they were trying to...
But technically, the ordinance that Eric read is the current ordinance.
Yes.
That is currently on the books and does exist as law.
Here's the ordinance.
Man, I gotta find a lot of...
Why hasn't it been informed?
So the current one, which is...
Hey, guys, one at a time, please.
This is the current one, which I think needs some adjusting, but currently it says the automotive vehicles, motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, or trailers of any kind or type without current license plates shall not be parked or stored on any residentially zoned property other than in a completely enclosed building. However, one boat and one recreational vehicle may be stored in the rear yard if they have current licenses. That's the current ordinance.
Okay, it says unlicensed.
No, it says, it has current license can be parked in the backyard. Unlicensed has to be inside a building. That's what the current one says.
License can be parked in the backyard.
Currently, yes. One boat and one...
That ordinance was passed in 1994.
If I read it, it says...
I read it.
License.
Yeah.
Can be parked.
In the backyard.
Backyard.
That's what the current one says.
You read it carefully and don't read that one.
Okay, however, one boat and one recreational vehicle may be stored in the rear yard if they have current licenses.
Even before that.
If they do not have current license plates, they shall not be parked or stored on any residentially zoned property other than in a completely enclosed building.
If they do not have, unlicensed.
Yes, that means they gotta be parked. Then they can't be parked anywhere on your property currently unless it's inside a building. This is, that's from back in 1994. That's, it's all... All right. I don't know about reading it wrong. I learned how to read many years ago.
That's enough.
Yeah.
I will say, if there's any personnel issues for anyone that's a public, or I guess a village employee, I am on the Personnel Committee. I feel free to contact me, and we can have a meeting. We meet quite frequently for different issues.
Yes.
And there's no issue at all. You can bring it to our attention, and we address it. So feel free to contact me if you'd like to set up a meeting. I promise you.
My contact information. Cheryl also has my contact information. So, you got a question, sir?
Yeah, I just wonder when you say it's...
Did you state your name for the record?
Yep, Bob Brickle. I just wondered when he said that it's been tabled.
Don't go down that road.
It's just tabled till the next council meeting?
No.
It's indefinitely, but it would have, somebody would have to make a motion to bring it off the table. And so I think what everybody's saying here is the intention is they're gonna revisit it over a period of time. And if there are similar, if there are revisions to or additions to the parking ordinances that aren't already there, they're gonna be brought back in the form of a new ordinance that'll have three separate readings like this did.
Okay. And there's a possibility it's thrown out completely.
True.
So there's lots of different ways that it could go.
Okay.
And there is gonna be an opportunity that, like we've mentioned, nothing's trying to be snuck in, and we're gonna make sure everything is public as possible.
So just a thought here, since there's such a huge gathering of people that are kinda upset about this ordinance, is there any way to have the committee members actually go out and talk to the residents that maybe you guys have issues with and get their, like talk to them one-on-one so they can get some feedback? Even do another town meeting and get people to come in and bring your feedback before you make this ordinance, so that way you can see like different aspects of people that live in this community? Is that a possibility? Versus just you guys making an ordinance on what you guys think is best? Is it possible to get some more feedback from the residents?
Well, I think tonight we did get a lot of feedback, and I know members of the committee have already spoken with a lot of individuals about it. But I think after tonight, we've got, we've got a lot of feedback, and we do welcome any more from the public. So... All right. Go ahead, Chief. Scott Kramer?
I don't have a lot. You have two of the four firefighters took firefighter one class that passed, interstate certified firefighter one. The other two have to retest yet. I'm not sure when that'll be. And I think that's about all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Did I see someplace where you had some EMTs pass, but they haven't went to the state yet?
We, all of our EMRs passed their class. Two of them have taken their state test and passed. So we have two EMRs as well.
The other ones haven't tested yet?
Haven't tested yet.
Planning?
Yes.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Val?
I really don't have anything to say, but we'll probably start working next month, so...
Okay. Thank you. Fiscal officers' report?
One's very short. You have the fund status report and the cash summary report, if you have any questions about it, for the first two months of the year.
The only one I had, I guess, question, not really about those so much, was I had, was this yours or mine? But I had a question on that. Did contract Red Garment, did that ever, because he contacted me, was that...
Corey just gave me, got me the information. He asked me about it. I thought Taylor was gonna email me, but I never saw it.
I sent that.
Oh, no, it must've gone into spam. Anyways, he sent it last Friday, so probably within the next couple of days.
He asked me for an update, and I said I wasn't on that committee, so...
Yeah, I started working on it last Friday. Didn't get a chance to work on it today, but I will tomorrow.
Okay. I told him that there's gonna be a contract. He had no problems with it. He just said, let him know when it's ready.
And Cheryl gave me the copy of the bill. Today evidently there was an invoice or something.
I talked with him previously. I told him we needed to get the actual copy of the invoice. The information was given to you.
Yep, yep. She gave me that today.
In regards to the reimbursement on the wellfield grant, does, do you have the paperwork you need to submit that? Or how do you, how does that process work with that grant specifically?
Which one?
The reimbursement for expenses on the wellfield.
OPWC or?
ODOD.
I think it was the, it was the bigger one.
The ODOD.
Yeah, the ODOD, yeah.
It's online. All done online.
I guess, does the project have to be complete before we get reimbursed on that?
We do each billing. They give a pay request.
Okay.
And I pay it, send it in, and they send me the money.
Okay.
That's all online, so it doesn't take so long.
Okay. Thank you.
And those pay requests are like sporadic.
Yeah.
It's not like beginning of the month or the end of the month, so...
So as you can see, Mayor Jones is out of town. He hasn't, didn't leave me anything in his mayor's report. So, anything else that needs to be brought before this council?
I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight and spent their time investigating your opinions, your thoughts, all that stuff. I mean, this is kinda like a town hall meeting. You know, we don't have very many of these. But, you know, the phone calls I have gotten, I appreciate those people calling and reaching out and getting my viewpoint on some of these ordinances. I appreciate the input and the, you know, just working things out, listening. And like I said, we're all here to listen. We're not here to hurt the town. I've been on this council many years. We try to do the right thing. We all do. And we go through meetings, and we have ideas, and we have decisions that we make. And, you know, personally, the committees I've sat on, you know, we're not perfect. Trust me. We're all human, and we're in this together. We live in this town. I'm proud of this town. I've lived here for over 30 years, and I plan on living here many more years and being a part of it. Again, thank you for coming tonight.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for Personnel.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Personnel appointment.
Do we need to?
Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, I'll second.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Oh, yeah.
Segley?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
I'll ask the chief, Danny Stays, stays on.
Who did the first?